I have 401 on my clock, my phone. So let's turn microphones on. Silence your cell phones, or shut them off, or whatever works. It's 401. Today is Monday, January 20th, 2020. And this is a special meeting of the Marquette Township Board. Good timing. To discuss the received manager's contract. So let's do the pledge first, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Randy, please.
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yeah.
Trustee Everson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Here.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Quittary is here, and Supervisor Duran.
Here.
Staff President, his manager Gerard, and our legal counsel, Roger Zappa.
All right. Thank you for that. We have no public, so that takes out board member comment. Need approval of the agenda?
No moves.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Oh, here comes Lisa from the Miami Journal.
You're late, we're quitting. I make a motion during? She didn't hear.
Yeah, you're one minute late, so we're quitting, Lisa. All right. We have received a revised employment agreement from candidate four, Dennis Limata. It's redlined, you've had a couple days to look at it. I have also provided you with a spreadsheet showing the difference between what we have offered and what he's requesting. I did update it, and that's the one we have it replace, taking the last two items off, separating them, I should say. They're separated from the total. They're not in that total difference or anything. They're one-time expenses that the township would incur, a moving expense and a severance, so they're not part of the budget process, would not be part of his regular salary. Let's back up just a little bit. If you remember, we went through this a few times, talking about whether to have the new manager's position stay in the compensation package, or consider a standalone contract. And the board decided that we would offer the compensation package that currently covers all employees, including the manager, and present that to the candidate. The candidate came back and is recommending a standalone contract, which is one of the reasons that I suggested it, that you considered in the beginning, because it could happen. And maybe the board would rather have that type of negotiated agreement with the manager. But again, you said no. You wanted to stay with the compensation package, and that's what we offered the candidate. He's asked for a few things different than what is in the current package. You can see the requested salary, and then I just kind of bundled the work comp, social security, the life insurance. He's asking for short and long-term disability. Some of that stuff is a little different. That's why actually, the two amounts are similar, because some of those things we don't have. But I did, Randy checked with Lois, and we got numbers from her on what that should be. So I'm pretty sure these are pretty good numbers. Some of them are rounded, anyway. A little bit of a difference in vacation, sick days, a little bit difference only because of the rate of pay, the changes. Currently, the manager takes the opt-out, so we don't have that expense for the manager's position. But the, Randy, now I'm thinking of that out loud. That's $1,200 a month?
About $1,200, no.
Okay. That's not going to be... Yes, that is correct. Okay. All right, so we might have a $1,000 difference there. Okay.
Yeah, the way that works is, we have a provision that says if you otherwise have health insurance already, and do not take the health insurance from the township, that the township would agree to pay 80% of the rate for a two-party, excuse me, two-party plan for not taking it out. In other words, there would be no claims against the township in terms of medical claims or anyone on those lines that would impact future payments.
So there's a, that's going to be the biggest expense from the package to be different if we chose to go with this. Then, car allowance, it's totally different. We don't have that. And the retirement, he's asking for a different retirement plan, too. So those are the numbers that are in the total at the very bottom. Knowing that, the first question before we even look at this, the first question I have to ask is, because the board made the motion to stick with the original compensation package we had, are you willing to consider this contract? This is something totally different than what we recommended, or requested, I guess, of him. And if you're not willing to do this, then there's no point in going any farther. We can come up with something else. We can talk about something else. But based on what he's requesting, those are the numbers in front of you. Okay? John?
My recall of what, I don't think, I don't recall it being made as a motion to be simply within the scope of the existing employees. My recollection was, that was what we asked, be prepared as if it was. I don't think there's a motion in place that said to make it that way. Make it. So I think, I think it was perfectly free for a counter-proposal to indicate something else.
Okay. Dave?
Yeah. It was a consensus, was a motion, that we stayed within the current framework.
Framework, yeah.
For the preparation of the offer.
Okay. I could be mistaken, I thought it was a motion.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying what the consensus was, is that it was the board's intention to stay within the current framework for the proposal.
That was, that was then, we're staying the same incentive to him, and stating that he'll come back and do some negotiation, that's what a negotiation would be after.
Starting point.
Yeah, starting point, yeah.
Okay. So do we want to talk about this contract request, then? Right? That's what we're going to do going forward? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. If you notice on the, his proposal, there were eight things that I picked out of the contract that he highlighted, and that's why they're in the order they are. I thought we should kind of go through one at a time, then, unless somebody's got something different. I'd like to talk about each point, and get your thoughts and opinions. I'm going to start with the first one. We've got a requested salary of $120,000. We offered, well, we didn't even offer, but the top of the pay scale on the application, or the advertisement was $108,650.
It's updated for this year, no?
Correct, for 2020.
Correct, yeah.
So that's the first thing. You can see the monthly breakdown, and how it's different, and what the increase would be to the township. Roger has made a point with me, we probably all thought, that because this is the way this was advertised, are we kind of out of the scope? Roger, do you want to kind of address that a little bit, of the legality of doing something different than what we advertised?
Well, you advertised a range of $78,000 to $106,000, depending on qualifications. You didn't get any satisfactory applicants, otherwise, within that range. So the question comes up, would you, if the advertisement was different, have received a separate set of applicants? Nobody has a crystal ball to know the answer to that. Is that conceivable? Certainly. Would you have? Who knows? As far as can the board consider things outside that, yes, you probably can, without legal liability. You don't have, I don't know who a prospective complainer might be at this point. So there's really several overlapping questions. I don't think you're exposing yourselves to liability to address a counter-proposal that may go outside of that. You recall it, there was also an opinion that I issued, I believe it was in November, I don't have the exact date of that in front of me, but I'm sure I have it in this. I believe it was actually November 20 of 2019, that addressed some options and alternatives that might come up, in terms of fringe benefits versus pay packages. As I say, I have that with me, and that was a written opinion.
Okay. Ernie?
No, I'm looking at that, and I mentioned this at the board meeting, too, that if we start going outside of the range that we said, my personal feeling is, we need to go back out and advertise to see what we're going to get, overall. I can't see us going above that. I have great concern when I looked at that, when you have someone with only six years experience in that, to go at the top, regardless of that. I said my feeling about the whole procedure for determining salaries and everything else, that's, I've said that in the past. I don't agree with it, I don't like it. We have no input at all. So I'm not enthusiastic about what's come back from him. He's trying to utilize where he's at now to benefit himself in that, overall, in that. And if you look at, and I took the time to go back and look at their budget, they are seven times our size, at least seven times. We have, oh, I got it here somewhere. We're about $669 million in the township. There are 4-point-some billion dollars in their township, somewhere in that vicinity and that. So you start looking at those things, and that. We can't compete. And we also have to be concerned with what future boards are going to have to address if we go forward in this, how this is going to work, and how it's going to work on negotiations that we've got coming up at year-end, and that, how this is all going to play out.
With our current unions.
Yes, with our current unions. We have a lot of things going, and we have to be very careful of that, otherwise we're going to have other problems. With them happening, we don't know what's going to happen. So I'm very concerned with going this route here at all. We made a good offer. I think it's high, for the number of years he's had the experience in that. That's my feeling on the salary.
Okay. Any other salary comments? Go ahead, John, if you want.
The candidate has indicated that he would be most desirous of being an at-will employee. That's in his counter-proposal. If we were to exceed the top range of the present manager's salary, if you do that, you, we've learned in previous discussion, that that would impact and change how that would affect other employees in the pack. Knowing that, I think that if the offer that was made is to be exceeded by any discussion, that means that you have to decide whether you want to have that. That may be undesirable impact on the rest of the employees' salaries. Or do you want to take him out of that and accept his desire to be an at-will employee? I think that's probably the most serious thing that we have to decide. I don't, I don't agree that his counteroffer to be an at-will employee, as opposed to what we, what range we used in the present, how that would be impacted if we were to revise it. I think that's all part of what we could decide tonight. We can, we can still do that, I think, and still be within the parameters of our attorney has expressed.
Well, he's not asking to be an at-will. Everybody's an at-will. I think he's, some of that discussion tied into the severance. He was...
But, but if he, I don't know which one to call that employee, but if the employee doesn't want to be part of that, he'd have to be non-part of it to get more than the top of the salary.
Going with the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
And so while Ernie's discussion is, he just isn't happy with it, it can be discussed.
Yep. If we keep him out of the compensation system and go with his individual contract.
That's my point. Thank you.
Okay. Dave?
I guess, I have a number of problems with this, but just sticking with the salary issue. If we decide to go above the 106 range with the adjustments, we're now deciding that we want to take that professional administrative group, and we want to remove one member of that. And instead of paying the going rate for the position in the region, we're going to pay him based on what we see his personal experience, and what he feels his personal experience is worth. And that's a whole different premise right from the start. The problem I see with that, is as soon as you do that, you have the rest of the individuals in the professional administrative group, and rightfully so, that are going to want to reconsider theirs. And instead of going for what the position pays, pay them for what they feel they're worth. And you start down a whole negotiation process, and while this package is some 20-some percent above what the average is, or what we originally offered him is, the impact that that's going to have, when it kicks in for the rest of the professional administrative group, is going to make our budget look absolutely pointless. And when you move it outside of that professional administrative group, you have the rest of the bargaining units that are out there, that historically, every time we go into negotiations with them, we're, they're explained that we have these budget constraints, and we can't pay them any more money, or we can't increase their benefits where they think they should be because of the budget constraints. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to consider moving one individual out of that algorithm that figures out what their position pays, and you're going to have a hard time selling that when the negotiations come up. And I don't think that this board is going to see all those problems this year, but I think we're passing a whole bunch of problems down to the next board, trying to renegotiate all these salaries. And I think it's going to make budget very difficult.
Yeah, if you remember, I've said numerous times, we need to consider the position, not the person. Whether we're supporting something that's happening, changing policies, changing job descriptions, it can't be about Dennis, or Randy, or John, or anybody. It's got to be about the position. How do we structure this? And that's how the pay scale is structured right now. It's by the job. I did do a little bit of research. Current city manager's making about $120,000 in Marquette, with a 2% increase for the next four years. So he's going to be close to $127,000, $128,000 at the end of that point. The county administrator starts his package as about $112,000, $115,000 right now, besides all the add-ons. Ishoming Township manager, newly hired. Ishoming Township, they have about the same number of people as we do. Somewhere around 3,000.
The city.
Ishoming Township, I looked up, 80,000.
They don't have a manager.
You mean Ishma, Ishma.
No, I looked at Ishoming Township. Okay, then...
Jim is the supervisor up there, and he's the manager also.
Well, I typed up Ishoming Township and Chocolate Township. Okay. I might be erred on that. Chocolate Township was 85,000. I also looked at, MTA had a link to ZipRecruiter for average township manager salaries in the state. The average is 75,000, and if they're in the 75th percentile, it's 90,000. So that's just a little more background information. I also looked at one of the organizations that Dennis belongs to. It's called the International City and County Management Managers Association, and theirs was about 80, 80 to 95,000 a year. So that's where, that's the local research that I checked on, just to give you a frame of reference. Pete?
Got a question for Roger, since you deal with townships and that. Roger, how is the managers throughout, who you deal with? Are they structured the same as we are, or are they outside, independent?
Well, first, there aren't that many townships in the Upper Peninsula that even have managers. And it will vary, I mean, it's an individual case-by-case situation on the ones that I'm familiar with, and I'm not familiar with all that many others.
Is the job, is it the same as Randy? Tightened to administration?
Well, I feel if apples and oranges are, and I'm not really at liberty to discuss that.
Well, they have 6,000 people.
Yeah.
We have 3,900, maybe four, no. Randy?
Yeah, I looked at this, and I don't, I don't see an argument for 120,000. That's way too high in my estimation. I think 108,650, which is adjusted for this year, is a fair offer. And going forward, you're going to get a 2.5% increase built in every year, if you stay with the system. But, you know, I've talked to some folks, you're absolutely right. If we go outside of this, it's going to create chaos in the negotiating world moving forward, and I don't think we need that right now. I just don't understand why, you come from a township, and it's just, I can't say 120,000 myself. That's just my comment.
Okay. Dave?
I just, might as well get it out there, I can't support this just based on the salary alone. As we go down further through this, I think it gets more out of line, but I can't, I can't support moving the job forward, just based on the salary, and what it does to our, to our professional administrative group, and what it does to everybody else that's going to be negotiating after them.
And that's the point I was trying to make, is are we keeping this position, not Dennis, but this position, part of the compensation package, and the policies and procedures that follow that? That's been my question all along. And if the board says that's kind of the basis we're going on, this does not fit that at all. The subsequent items for vacation, sick days, are just based on, he's asking for an extra week of vacation, well, a little bit more. So that's just some of that extra days, plus the wage difference. And the sick days, it's just the wage difference. And again, I mentioned about the health insurance, we're not paying it now for the manager's position, which is fine. The rest of the staff does have opt-outs, too. The car allowance is, is just ridiculous. He's asked, he's asked either for a car, or a car allowance, and he prefers the allowance. We have a vehicle sitting in the parking lot that is for anybody's use. And retirement, he's asking for a change to what everybody else has, totally outside of what the compensation system has right now. It would have to be restructured. Randy can speak to that. He knows the specifics of the length of time it would take. And Dennis is asking for 18,000 being dumped into that plan, right off the bat. And then I mentioned to you the moving expenses of one time. I looked on various sites for moving expenses, and it was hard unless I put a specific address in, in my name and my email, to get a real number. But these were some of the formulas. It came up to about $4,300 for a three-bedroom home, 400 miles away. So I bumped it up a little bit to five, because I don't know his circumstances. And then the severance, we kind of hit on to a little bit. That's not something that's part of his yearly salary. But I think that's a separate consideration, if we do look at this whole package, on what that would mean to the next board. You know, we could all be here, we could all not be here, as far as who he would have to work with, work for, and the impact that that might have on the township if something came up. So, Pete, I think you were first, right?
I don't think car allowance. We have a vehicle here, and Marquette Township is not like grand blank. We're close with the five miles, you can run it out a bit, or in a bit. I know you have to go outside for meetings and that, but if the car is not available, use a personal car, and then we pay mileage, I think that's 57 cents as far as, as the last time I looked.
Yep, 57 cents.
And, I don't know. Where else did I see, mileage? I would prefer him not to be into the group, just, we're talking about it one year, and then you can negotiate after if he's out of the contract, out of the administration group. Where else did I see? That's all I see, I'm telling you.
Okay. Dave?
I guess as long as we're wandering down through the rest, but...
That's okay, yeah, that's fine.
Just the, just the severance package, he's, he wants no probation, and he wants six months severance. Essentially, what that means, as far as I can see, if he's here six months, and we have a parting of the ways, he gets six months paid for being here. I can't see where we would ever treat anybody else like that, or, I just think that's a ridiculous amount of money.
Okay. Anybody else? John, go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Are you skipping around if we are?
Yes, that's what I said. Go ahead.
On the vehicle. I would prefer that, if the vehicle is to be considered, I would consider it a better choice to make, to provide the manager with a township vehicle, as opposed to awarding what's in the green button, $1,000 a month.
$500?
$500 a month, which comes to $6,000 a year. So if we're just, we're talking about the vehicle, when we do, I think it's a preference for the township to be in ownership of the vehicle that we provide. And it, that gives it a little bit more spread use in the township. Granted, it would be with the permission of the manager, but at least it would be a township vehicle. And I'm sure that the township insurance and all of that would be included, but I think an allowance that would be $500 a month. All you have to do is look at that for a year and say it's $6,000. I would, my preference would be that it be a township vehicle.
Okay. Anybody else? Ernie, go ahead.
On the vehicle, $500, I looked at that, and I, he's coming from a place where he's already got one. He wants to carry it through. We don't have the resources, and I keep bringing this up, and you have to realize that, we don't have the resources. Anything we do is going to be... Anything we do is gonna be kicked down the road to all the other future boards and that. To me, Randy doesn't travel that much within the township or within the county, I don't believe. Randy may speak to that itself, but to provide that, he's gonna get the federal dollar amount and that. And if you look what he says, he wants anything outside the township. I don't know, maybe I'm, I look in a different way. It's how many meetings are within the township that the manager's gonna attend? Probably gonna attend something, go down to county, go into the city and that, and you're talking three or four miles and that? We're gonna pay him three, four dollars for that? I don't know. Maybe I come from a different, different breed and different timeframe and that too. Within the greater Marquette area, I think it's one of those things. You've got, we got a car out there, we can use it and that, if nothing else and that. I really can't see even discussing this anymore. I think it's mute because he's just bringing it in what he's got right now, now and there.
Randy?
I think I agree with what I hear from the rest of the board. We have a vehicle that's here. If he wants to take it home even, that would be fine. But it's here, it's our vehicle. I think, uh, we don't have to, the car allowance is out in my opinion, and we have a car, so.
I think taking it home might be difficult because the staff does use it, they'd have to schedule it.
If available.
Staff for mileage.
Yeah.
They're not using it.
Well, if they're gonna do something in Lansing or Traverse City, it's a lot cheaper. That's the whole point of it, is to take that. Yep, it's just little stuff around town, it's different, but.
Well, my premise is we have a car and if he needs to use it, it's usually available, so.
Yep.
And if it's out of the lot, they can plow it, so.
Yeah. This is pretty much a pie-in-the-sky recommendation. It's still, the consideration really, as Dave mentioned, and I've had this conversation with manager Gerard. The consideration that this puts on the township, taking the manager out with a compensation system. Now, from an owner's standpoint, and I've done management before with other employees, the manager or the boss of that department or that section should have something different than the employees. Whether it's a higher wage, or maybe an extra week's vacation, or some kind of something to distinguish them, I think. But this is over and above anything that staff would have. I don't, I don't know how I feel about the difference between standalone contract and a compensation system because that's why I brought it up before. I, I'm struggling with this. Because you can't, you can't pay somebody or give them something so much more than the employees that you've got, now you've got bad feelings. They still have to manage these people, and if they have something so outrageously different, how, how are they gonna? Especially when we have unions that are, it's a negotiated contract with them. It's not like even private where you can, I can deal with more flexibility and pay a manager more if I want to. I have that privilege to do. This is, this is a conundrum of how do you balance that? The flexibility we do have, I mean, it's right off the bat, it's gonna cost us more in the health package. We know that's another twenty thousand right off the bat, that we have to pay in addition to what we had intended. The car allowance, I'm thinking, is out. Retirement, I guess I don't understand the structure enough, but it seems like it could save a little bit of money, other than setting it up. But again, I'm gonna refer to Randy, he can, he can deal with that. We may have more flexibility in the moving expense. That's where we could provide something different without having it, and it's just a one-time. I don't like the severance, that scares me. Six months for the next board. And, and I talked to Roger a little bit about the app, not the at-will, the, um, well, if you, if you had a hostile board and it would have to be, what is it? If it was gonna be a felony or, what was this wording in there that we talked about?
Oh, just cause?
Just cause, thank you. I knew it was something small like that. Thank you. That makes a difference. Do we find, define that? You know, if we find out that the guy's stealing stuff or, or doing something totally illegal, you know, that's just cause over something else? I don't know. The whole severance thing, I think, should be three months.
Well, you don't get severance if you get caught with stealing.
Right, right. I just meant you'd have to define it a little bit better.
But your manager still, you don't get called in, like the rest of the union people do. That's why I'd like to see them different. In most situations, the manager or the head of the department is paid differently than the rest of them, and you don't go by the same contract.
Somehow, yeah.
It just, I just, have, have, Roger, have you checked anybody as far as severance pays in different townships?
I can tell you that severance pay is not a universal benefit across the board. Some people have it, some do not. So, to, to just start the premise that everybody has, severance pay upon termination is a false premise. Having said that, there are places that do have that. I haven't done any independent studies to tell you that three months is an average. But I am familiar with some other circumstances where I have seen three months as being what has been offered and accepted.
That association that I was referring to before, the city-county, their averages are seven months to twelve months for severance. But those are in, those higher positions too. John, I think you were next. Do you have your light on?
I do.
Yeah.
Uh, I just have a clarification. The, on page one, the salary and insurance protection. The annual salary commencing at a hundred and eight, six fifty. Is that the correct number, or is the number that's being bantered about at being a hundred and six? What is, what is the correct number? Is it?
The advertisement was based on 2019 and it was a hundred and six. And then this was updated to the 2020 month.
So, this is the, the number that?
The top levels.
This is a top level that should be affirmed on.
For now, yes.
Okay.
One oh eight, one oh eight, six fifty is the original one oh six, two-and-a-half times, two-and-a-half percent higher for 2020.
Okay.
As of January first, the pay schedule changed.
Okay, so that's a number we should be dealing.
Yeah, that's why I put it in the spreadsheet.
Right, and that was the number that was sent with the offer.
Okay, I saw it. Thank you.
Randy?
Okay, just my comments is, um, again, I was here, you know, I'm the youngest one here, but I was here in the days of a no-compensation system. And I can tell you that it was kind of chaotic, as Randy could support me on. And we worked hard and fast on this compensation system to get everyone on kind of the same page. And, um, if you get away from it, I think you could have problems once again. So, um, I think the one oh eight, six fifty is, is fair for now. And while I have the floor, I'll just go down my list too, so. Requested vacation, I, I don't have a problem with that. New employees where I'm at get twenty days to start, and it's not a big deal really to me. Requested sick days, it's the normal, that's really not a change. Health insurance, we're gonna have to pay regardless, so that's really not an issue. I would recommend no car allowance, we have a car here. Retirement, I don't have enough information to make a judgment on that. Manager would have to, um, you know, speak to that. It might be the savings, it might be a wash, I'm not sure. The moving expense, I really don't have a problem with, I think that could be dealt with. Severance package, six months is a little excessive, and I guess I could go kind of either way on that. You have, you could have a hostile board in November. And if they wanted to get rid of the manager, whoever it is at the time, I, I would begrudge that person a little protection. 'Cause then the board would have to really justify to its residents why they're terminating the manager for no cause. And I know Randy had three months, maybe four months is more appropriate, but, um, I think that protection, maybe six months is excessive, but three to four months, I think that needs to stay. Because you can't begrudge that person some protection. And, and, you know, we can't see in the future what's gonna happen. And three or four months isn't gonna, you know, devastate the township financially. And it would make the board justify why they are doing what they're doing to the residents. Because I know if I'm not in the seat and they would terminate someone and they had to pay fifty or sixty thousand dollars to do that, I think I'd be at the podium hollering and screaming, "Why are you doing this?" So, I don't really have an issue there. I think we could go, we could negotiate that, but, um, that's about where I'm at with this.
Okay, Dave?
Speaking of justifying things to the residents, I'm not sure how we justify this to the residents. We're stepping way outside of our comfort zone in the budget. Somehow, you have to be able to justify what you're doing. And I don't see how you can do that. I would like to hear from the manager. I think I understand item number six on the retirement. I think that's just a payout to him and he invested as he see fit. I have that figured out, right? But it'd be nice to the manager address that.
Yes, please.
Marquette Township is a member of the municipal employee retirement system, which is a statewide system for all municipal employees, city, county, village, some school districts, some other associate, you know, authorities and things such as that, but roughly twelve hundred members around the state. And you have options within that on what kind of a retirement you offer. We are on what's referred to as a defined benefit plan. That means you pay a premium into it, that premium builds over time, so that when your employee retires, myself, when I retire, I will have a guaranteed retirement, so much a month for as long as I live, basically. Everybody else in the township is contributing to that. It's invested, the investment returns are what pay those ongoing, those ongoing costs into the future. Defined contribution, as I understand is being proposed, is a different mechanism. It's more along the lines of a 401K type of a situation where, as I understand, the discussion that's going on, I hear the term eighteen thousand dollars. Basically, what that's saying is, is that the township agrees to put into a fund, to deposit into a fund every year eighteen thousand dollars that at the time it's deposited, becomes the individual's fund to invest how they see fit. And when they retire, what they will draw off of is whatever that fund has generated over the term of employment. With no guaranteed benefit. Could lose everything if the market goes south, could do very well if the market does very well. So, those are the two different retirements that you're looking at. Not from this township standpoint, every time you have one of your staff go outside of the defined benefit plan, that person is no longer contributing to your long-term funded retirement plan for the rest of the staff. Each individual has their own account in there, but on the whole, that's how you determine your funded level, basically, going forward into the future. And as that's invested, those investments, basically, the way it's structured is the investment income covers sixty-six percent of what goes out. So, it's a long-term retirement benefit. So, two differences. One is a long-term guaranteed, the other is a risk.
Roger, can I, excuse me, Dave, one second, get a clarification from you? Can we have the next manager be a part of the compensation system? And yet have a different wage or a different vacation package or something else? In other words, if the board is, is saying they want to look at this contract and consider it, but they don't, they wanna stick with the current salary based on the compensation package, can we give them another week's vacation or two weeks? Or give them a different life insurance package or a different, you know, are we allowed to do that? Is it because, I don't know that we can do both, that's what I'm trying to figure out. We're saying, one of, some of us are saying we wanna stay with the, the system and the structure of what we have, but we're okay with offering, you know, another week's vacation or another, can we do that?
Let me clarify something before Roger answers.
Okay.
You're talking about two different things.
Right.
Compensation system has to do with wage only. Basically, the compensation system is predicated on a set of job descriptions that the board has adopted. Those job descriptions, the typical duties, responsibilities, educational requirements, all those kinds of things go into a matrix. You've all seen a matrix before. That matrix basically comes out with a total based on ten separate factors. That total determines where you fall in the pay structure, in either a pay grade from one to ten. And this gets a little bit to what Trustee Aru was talking about. There is a differentiation within the compensation system that recognizes levels of authority and responsibility. As you go higher in the pay grade, your responsibility goes higher. Your, uh, your level of accountability is higher to the board. The township manager is at grade ten. It is the only staff member in grade ten. That's the highest grade in the township. And that is because of the minimum requirements that you have for the position, the education that's required, the length of service that's required, all of the various things that you require equate to that pay grade. I am at the top of the steps, because I've been here eighteen years. Each year, you progress along that. The theory is, is that you become more effective at your job, more educated, more understanding of what's going on, more valuable to the township and to the board. Therefore, your pay rate increases to the top, which is right now, this year, one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which is my salary. Second part of the contract is the rest of the benefits. So, the compensation system is only the actual salary, the dollar amount. Everything else is separate from that. Health insurance, life insurance, sick days, vacation, everything else. So, when you're looking at the contract that I currently have, the contract says two things. Number one, my salary will be, will be dictated by the compensation system. My benefit plan, however, is tied to the same plan that applies to all township staff. So, we're all on a.
Personal annual cost.
Yeah, and the rationale for that is, it's consistently similar, the same. Everybody has the same level. From an administrative standpoint, it's easy to administer and it's less costly for the board. Now, the struggle that you're having is, do you remain in that structure? Or do you want to absent the position from that structure and do something different with it? And where you run into, this is what Roger was talking about earlier, he's gotta be a little more tender with it than I do. But if you want to go to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you can certainly do that. Then you have to justify why it's worth that. When for eighteen years, it's been worth something less. So, I guess that's, that's where I'm at. You know, you're all probably sitting there wondering the same thing I am. If you're willing to throw another forty-two thousand dollars at it, maybe I'm not retiring.
I'm gonna apply.
You know, I mean, realistically, I mean, the job is worth what the job is worth in this market. And it's been raised by several other board members. We're not Flint, Sacramento Bay City. We're not eighty-five thousand residents. We're not four-point-something billion dollars. We're Marquette Charter Township, thirty-nine hundred residents with a much smaller budget. And right now, your budget has roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that for total compensation, wages and benefits for the township manager. So, that's where you're at.
If you was a superintendent, Randy, would he be in that group?
If you, if you had a superintendent, yes, a superintendent would be in that group, but it would be a higher level than town. Because it has higher statutory responsibility. A superintendent is a different job than a manager.
So, maybe to answer what I said, the fact that the personnel and policy manual ties to the manager's contract and affects the rest of the employees doesn't matter, it's the contract itself for the wage. That, that would answer my question then, if that's correct.
Let me try to answer it. There are several parts to it. The first part is, you can stay within the compensation classification system and elect to change the benefits. to change the benefits. I think that was what initial question was.
Part of it, yep.
And I guess after all the dialogue, I'm not sure what else there was posed in the question.
Well, how would that even be structured then? If there's a formula to determine vacation and sick time, for one thing, we're not even talking about the wages yet, but if there's a formula and we go outside of that, then how does that get structured?
There isn't a formula in your classification and compensation system that says that the manager must receive the following fringe benefits. It is your contract that incorporates by reference
Okay.
the benefits from that group of administrative
Yep.
employees that's also specified. Can you deviate from that? Absolutely. You can, you can agree to anything you want in terms of benefits to some extent. Does that create some other issues? Absolutely. That's not a legal question.
Okay.
I think what you're asking me is, can you legally stay with the compensation classification system and modify the benefits? Yes. Keep in mind that the policy itself, and I didn't draft that policy, that was done many years ago by your labor council, but that says that it does not apply to the township manager in fact. So the contract actually supersedes that policy book anyway, but you can take, it's a shorthand, to say that right in the contract, that we are going to incorporate by reference this section of the policy book that says these are the benefits we want the manager to have. That's what your current manager has indicated over the past several years makes sense, both administratively and to this current manager's needs. But can you legally deviate from that in terms of benefits? Yes. Should you is not a legal question. That's something that you can, that the board needs to debate.
Okay. Same thing with the wage then?
Well, your wage is more defined by your formula.
Right.
If you're going to adhere to the classification and compensation system, then you at least have some parameters that you should be within for your wage.
And it's defendable.
Then actually, we shouldn't be at the one oh eight. We should be at the six-year level, if it's based on experience.
Well, again, you know, that comes down to a judgment call in terms of applying it because you've got X number of years at Grand Blank Township plus X number of years, six years as superintendent or supervisor in this township. So, you know, there's a total of ten and a half years.
Okay, not just the six.
Right.
Okay. So we would be justified, if we follow this system, to at least be able to be at the top of the wage scale?
Correct. That would be a reasonable rationale.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Go ahead.
But, you know, Roger's absolutely correct. You know, you can, specific benefits were not enumerated in the advertisement. The wage was. The salary structure was, a range of seventy-eight to one oh six. Yet two thousand nineteen dollars, because that's when the ad ran, two thousand nineteen, now running to two thousand twenty, which increased the compensation, increased the dollar amount to one oh eight, six fifty. The benefits have not changed. The benefits remain the same. And basically what it said in the ad, and I don't have it in front of me, but the ad basically said salary range of seventy-eight to one oh six plus all fringe benefits and the wage depending on qualifications. So, I mean, that's what you had out there for, for the advertisement. Can you change that? Absolutely. As a, for instance, I could decide this year that I want health insurance. So I would not be an opt out any longer. I'd pick up the health insurance, it would cost you more money. But, but yes, those, the fringe benefits can be altered pretty easily. You have a, in your budget, your two thousand twenty budget, you have essentially a laundry list of costs for each individual budget under the miscellaneous section for each position in the township. So that could give you some guidance in terms of what the costs for the individual benefits are. Health insurance, life insurance, workers' compensation. Well, you really can't do anything with workers' compensation or with social security, which you can with retirement, health insurance, life insurance, those kinds of things.
Okay. I don't know. Dave, I thought you were first.
Yeah, I guess, I have a question for Randy here in just a half second here, but the salary thing, I agree with Treasurer Johnson. I never, I don't believe we should be at one hundred and eight, six fifty. I don't know what pushed him to the top. Strictly subjective on my part, but I don't, I'm not in favor of moving him to the top of the scale. I don't think six years as, as a superintendent down there gives him the experience to do that. I don't think being a supervisor gives him that experience either.
I can tell you it wouldn't.
I believe that if you were going to calculate a fair and reasonable wage, you would see where six years as superintendent
That's what I wondered.
move him on the pay scale and, and go with that, which is going to be something less than one hundred and six. And to think, and I know we're bandering around here, is to think that we could offer him a salary that's within the professional administrative compensation criteria and then pad the rest of his benefits enough to make up the difference. Jeez, we'd have to have him a limousine taking him back and forth to work to get that car allowance up there. And we could give him about five weeks of vacation, but I hope you realize that the, at least I'm sure that the residents are smart enough to see what we're doing. We're just, this is a definition of smoke and mirrors. If you start padding everything else and giving them the, the wage package where just so you can say, yeah, the wages are right there. And so will everybody else in the professional administrative group are going to see what's going on. So nobody's going to be happy with that. The question I got for the manager is, if one person pulls out of the retirement package and we're now putting money into a fund that he, that's separate from that, and doesn't that affect how liquid the fund is? And if you have enough people do that? In other words, the rest of the professional administrator to have to say, yeah, that's a good idea, I want to do that too, does that affect the liquidity of that fund and its ability to continue to pay future retirements?
Well, it certainly could. You know, you'd have to have an actuarial evaluation and then, and then actuarial evaluation would have to be done anyway to, to do that. Basically, what it would amount to is you would have to add to your retirement package currently, a defined contribution option, which is not a, it's not an insurmountable thing. It's mainly paperwork and formal actions of the board. But basically, it does remove one position from contributing to your long-term debt for the remainder of the employees because the rest of the employees are still on the defined benefit plan and will have
If you do that for that individual in that group, then you could effectively have, the balance of that group requests the same treatment.
Well, they could, certainly.
Which diminishes that even further.
True. That's true. The, the, what keeps a defined benefit program going, and you see this in a lot of communities that fell under the spell of, I believe it was Governor Engle, that put forward the idea of defined contribution as a quote savings measure, because it does reduce your nipple cost, but it does not provide you the long-term revenue to meet your long-term obligations to those employees that remain in the defined benefit plan because you've got less money going into it every year as, as others work the fine contribution. I guess, there's one other point that I was going to make. Basically, the, the issue of the fringe benefits, they are changeable, but if you start moving people into and out of health insurance, your premium will be affected, your long-term cost will be affected. You know, much of what we do is predicated on group benefits. And right now, all of the township employees, all twenty-two of the township employees are on the same health insurance plan, same life insurance plan, same vacation schedule, same holiday schedule, same sick leave accrual schedule. And as you start modifying those and having different options, it increases the cost of your management of those systems because now your accountant has to have additional documentation and additional plans that have, that have to be managed. One other comment that I was going to make regarding the conversation about the compensation system is, and I think Porte-Garrett touched on it, the main reason you have the compensation system that you have, and again, get to Treasurer Johnson's earlier comment about not liking the system, it insulates you from having to negotiate wages every year. You have predictable increases, predictable wages for all of your staff every budget cycle. You know what the cost is going to be. You have a mechanism built into it that gives you a calculator for what your annual increases are, and that has kept us within three percent of the average of the labor market over years. So it takes away, it's bad enough having to negotiate contracts every two years or three years or four years. You would be doing it every budget cycle, you would be negotiating wages. So the compensation system takes that off your table. It's a, it's a system predicated on duties, responsibilities and authorities and vulnerabilities that equates to a dollar amount. And then every year, when you look at the, what's happening in the consumer price index and what's happening with state treasury, in other words, your revenue versus everybody else's expenditures, the target is to keep the dollar worth a dollar as you go year to year to year without having all the rollbacks where a dollar's only worth seventy-five cents this year. It's a mechanism to try and keep, keep your staff basically on an even keel, at least keeping up with the national cost of living. So that's the rationale behind it. And it's worked very well. This year, two thousand twenty, the increase was two point one eight percent on your, on your wages. So certainly acceptable when you see others that are giving three and four and five percent increases and then turning around and raising utility rates fifteen percent a year for the next three years because they can't afford them anymore. You don't, you're not doing that. Your compensation system is keeping you in track and in sync with what's going on nationally, yet not going overboard. I mean, it's, it's keeping you consistent. A dollar's worth a dollar this year, just like it was worth a dollar last year in our system.
And I guess, I guess that's my point with this whole thing is, if we decide to step outside of the professional administrative pay guidelines, that is definitely going to roll downhill. It's going to affect everybody in that group, probably sooner than the bargaining units, but it will roll down to the bargaining units too, and they're going to see that and they're going to expect to be compensated accordingly. If you find some magic way to keep him inside of that compensation group and have his expenses to offset it, every other person in the, in the professional administrative group is going to see that and going to expect, see the same changes on there. So when you're seeing, what is it, fifteen percent change here, I think you can go back to the, our total compensation on the budget for, for all the groups, especially the professional administrative group, and you can increase that by the same percentage because sooner or later it's going to get there. And I think when you go back to, the bargaining units starts at the end of this year, right?
Uh huh.
When you go back to those bargaining units, they're going to be looking for the same percentage increase. They're not, and if, if one guy's entitled to it, they're all entitled to it. It's hard not to argue that that, the me too aspect of that. So whatever we do here, whether we like it or not, or how we cloak it, is going to go downhill and everybody's going to want a piece sooner or later. And I think what we don't pay for this year, that this board has to deal with, I think we're just shoving problems to the next board in two thousand twenty-one.
Roger, you have your hand up.
Just real briefly, on the issue of defined benefit versus the defined contribution plan, that's not quite as simple an issue as it might appear on the surface because there's some very definite and complex rules and regulations on how you treat employees that diminish the ability to provide special treatment to high-level employees, as they talk about top-heavy rules. Your managers, for example, in a corporate setting, can't have one type of plan whereby the corporation contributes twenty percent per year and all of the peon employees get two percent per year. Because there are, again, very complex rules and regulations on determining whether a particular plan or a particular employer complies with those. I'm not at all prepared to say that this does or does not violate any of those rules. My only observation is that there are many factors that have to be looked at in offering or agreeing to providing a, a different type of retirement plan for one employee regardless of the status of that employee, but especially if that's, that employee is considered a high-level employee within the plan.
It's the same way in the private sector too. Even being an owner, I have to treat all, all of us are the same. I can't have anything special.
Yeah, and I certainly didn't get into that kind of detail, but just giving you an overview of the difference between defined benefit and defined contribution. But Roger's absolutely accurate. And if you wish to go in the direction of the defined contribution, part of the, it mentioned there was a process. Part of that process is the staff, the legal staff at MERS, in his retirement system, will evaluate all of these issues in terms of your application to go to a defined benefit or defined contribution plan when you have a defined benefit in place. Basically, they will do all of those assessments in terms of how does this comply with federal law and, you know, and all those things to make sure that you don't wander into the weeds and get yourself in trouble. That's one of the things that they would do. And again, this, the entire discussion that we've been having since four o'clock circles back around to that very first initial question. Do you want to have a consistent contract with what you've had for eighteen years or do you want to do something different? And again, you know, if the request is for a salary of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, one of the ways you can do that is to say, okay, we're abandoning the current contract, we're going to negotiate a new contract, the salary's going to be one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget. How do you want to have the remaining thirty? Do you want health insurance? Do you want some vacation? Do you want? But we're not going beyond a hundred and fifty. And that's what you have in your budget.
Ernie, you've waited long time.
On the retirement, I've talked on this before, on between the two of them. One we currently have, everyone contributes to it.
Yep.
And we have an unfunded liability of over three million dollars set in there somewhere. Looking up on eighteen, I couldn't find my eighteen or nineteen on that. We're about seventy-eight to eighty percent funded in that.
Correct.
So, anything we do is going to increase that. And we may end up with one retiring last year, two this year, that unfunded liability liable to, to go up. I don't know for sure. We're going to have to wait for MERS to make that decision, how that's all going to work. Now, if you go for the defined, which I am, through Northern, once I walked out the door, Northern's hands were washed. It's all mine. I take care of myself. They contributed so much and I contributed so much.
Right.
And I took care of it myself, and that's what I'm living on in that. The entity that you're working with, they slap you on the back, great to have you here, you're gone, we don't worry about you anymore. You're, you're done and over with. We don't have to worry about you. So, you have two of them. One of them is, we're in one plan, we have a liability out there, and we have to continue to put some dollars into that through the new employees on that. Now, if you go outside of it, as Randy says, you have some other problems here, two of them, right? As much as I like the defined, because the minute you walk out the door, we don't have to worry about them anymore. They're on their own, and that two of them.
Well, and that comes down, yeah, that comes down to a basic question in terms of what is it that you're trying to accomplish with your retirement plan? Are you trying to provide a retirement for your staff after they retire? Or, as you said, Ernie, you had two options at Northern, one option was a defined benefit, the other option was what you took, and that was you put so much in, they put so much in, you invested it, managed it, and when you left, it's done, you're on your own.
That was the option.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, right. You know, and realistically, as it sits, sits right now, the way, the way the system works is Kirk left at his age, which was
Old.
fairly experienced. And his replacement came in much younger. So he will be contributing to the retirement system towards his own retirement and helping pay Kirk's retirement on end of the future. When, when I leave, it's very likely whoever comes in behind me is going to be less experienced, younger, and they will do the same thing. They will continue to pay for however long I, you know, live to continue to draw benefits. When I'm done, it's done. You know, you don't have a continuing liability beyond that. So, I mean, that's, that's the philosophy. The philosophy is, what is it that you're trying to do with the retirement plan? Provide for Provide for a funded retirement for your staff or not? And realistically, defined contribution is a risk. I mean, you put so much into their account, they put so much into their account. If you require them to, it's their account, and how they manage it is how they manage it. It may be worth a lot of money, it may be worth nothing in 10 years, depending on how they invest.
This is, I don't know that you'd know this number off the top of your head, or maybe you do, however much you look at the MERS setup that we have, would it be totally unrealistic to think we would put $18,000 in one employee's fund in the course of a year?
Probably not.
That's about what we, we would not?
No, you would not. It's a percentage, basically. Every year, every year, the actuaries do a study, you know, as what Ernie mentioned. They do a study. They determine what your long-term liability is based upon your current population, their ages and estimated mortality and all of those kinds of things. Right now, they use 85 years as benchmark. They assume everybody's going to live to be 85. Some will live longer, some won't. Some won't stay the 10 years to vest. Whatever has been put in for them stays in the fund. They don't take it with them. They don't own it. You know, so there are a lot of different variables that they analyze, and every year they give you an actuarial report. In that actuarial report, they tell you what your percentage contribution is going to be for the next year to meet your obligations in the future. Yeah, and I, I can't remember what it is right now this year, but it's in your, it's in your budget document, the figure in terms of what percentage it was for 2020. But that is, as Ernie mentioned, right now you're about 78% funded, which is, you're one of the more highly funded, certainly in UP, you're more one of, one of the more probably close to the top 3% in terms of funded level in the UP. Statewide, you're, you're pretty good. You're in the upper, upper three-quarter percentile, basically. So your funding level is good. You have a young staff, fairly young staff. You can anticipate that probably your next retirement won't be for another 10 years. You know, unless there's disability to retirement, something like that that's unforeseen, but, but you will continue to build that fund up. Right now, the fund is doing very well. So far this year, it's, it's almost 20% return on the fund, and it's at $12 billion right now that's invested. So it's doing well, and it's anticipated to do well going into the future. But the question then becomes, where you see defined contribution coming up is where you have really financially distressed communities that are looking for immediate savings because they're not going to pay premium on it. They're going to put a fixed amount into the retiree account, and the individual is going to put a fixed amount in, and as Ernie said, that they're done, their hands are done. You got my 6% this year, you're done. So it's predictable. That is predictable. But again, there are a lot of restrictions, as Roger said, depending, when you're talking about your top-level position, to make sure that it's not being, especially in the public sector, that it's not being overly compensated in comparison to others. That makes it an unfair system.
Roger?
On that note, the 18,000 under the defined contribution plan, the employer has to just decide and adopt the policy as to what percent of the compensation will be deposited into the defined contribution plan. So if you do the math on this one, that's a 15% computation.
Five now, I think? Is it 5% now?
For what?
For our, our retirement?
Contribution?
Yeah, it's not 15, is it?
No, no, not 15.
But, but they're calculated altogether differently. That's why there isn't an unfunded liability. To be clear, defined contribution plans from the employer's standpoint have some significant benefits and cost savings over the years. You won't have unfunded liabilities because if you agree that you're going to contribute, let's say, 10% a year, then you can just plug right into your, your budget, well, if we've got salaries or, or wages of such, such an amount, then 10% of that figure is what your liability is, and you pay it, and it's done, and there is no unfunded component of that. But in a defined benefit plan, which you're currently in, you have, you get told what your contribution will be depending on a whole bunch of factors, on how long people are living and how the market is doing and so forth. So that's where you get your unfunded liabilities. So from the employer's standpoint, a defined contribution plan, if you were to switch over to that across the board for all future employees, that might be something to discuss down the road. The problem comes in of trying to do that for one high-level employee and not others. And then usually, again, complex procedure, your MERS representative can discuss this, but usually there's an opt-in, excuse me, for moving forward. You may recall the city of Marquette went through that about maybe 18 years ago, where they, where they switched from a defined benefit to, from one to the other, basically, and that wound up in some litigation.
Okay, that's good information. Dave?
Personally, I think we've probably worked this to death. I guess there's three things the board needs to consider. One is, do we want to accept this contract where it's at? Do we want to remove the conditional offer of employment? Or do we want to continue negotiating? And if we decide to continue negotiating, do we want to do it under the current guidelines for the professional administrative group, or do we want to move outside of that?
Couldn't have said it any better.
The wage adjustment for six years would bring it to 102,502. So right now, it's got, it's at 2020 levels for over 10 years at 108,650. If we went to the six-year level, it'd be 102,502.
Did you offer him, am I right, the 108,650?
I didn't offer him anything.
What did you send him?
The contract you have in front of you at 108.
Yeah.
That's the offer. That's the offer, then?
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't want you to think I had
Well, that's, that's the offer of them.
Yes, sorry.
Can I continue for a minute?
Sure, go ahead.
I've been listening to everything going back and forth, and I think that maybe we can come to some kind of an agreement, but I think, I think listening to everybody, we should probably have him stay in the current system. I like either way, but I, I feel for all the rest of the employees that it's important that, that he is in it for the reasons that, that Randy had mentioned, that we need to keep as many employees contributing into that system as we can, just to keep every, our current, our retirees. This is something that happened in the county, and they had people that were double-dipping, and they ran into a lot of problems with not having enough money in their retirement system. So I guess with that, I think we should probably offer him to stay in the, in the system. For the size of our township, I think the 108,650 is a very reasonable offer. I really do. I, I, the 120, I think, is, is a little bit high for the amount of work. I think we could probably offer 16 days vacation versus 20, up that a little bit. Sick leave seems to be okay at 12. The health dental, I don't see an issue there. The vehicle, I agree, $500, very high. It's, I, I, he can use what we have, use his own vehicle to the, to the standard state rate. And I think we could maybe, to fatten it up a little bit, give him a $10,000 moving expenses. Rather than six months severance pay, maybe four months severance pay, just to try and move it, and if that doesn't work, then it doesn't work. But what, what was the reason that, why Dennis didn't want to be in the current system? Did you give him any kind of a reason or?
Just what was in the cover letter.
Okay.
Yeah, he wanted, wanted more flexibility, more freedom.
That would be my, that would be my opinion. I'd love to see him up here. I really would. Y'all know that. But you have to be reasonable with what you're asking for also.
Yeah, I think this is excessive.
We can, we can work these numbers just a little bit and possibly present him an offer with, with what I have in front of me.
So does there a consensus, or does somebody want to make a motion, or do you have more questions, or, John?
I just want to make sure. I think what I'm hearing is that the, the employment agreement that was sent to the candidate had an annual salary commencing at 108,650. So that offer has already been made. The revision is the only thing that we're thinking as to whether we would accept it or not. If the consensus, we may need to do more than one consensus session. What I'm getting at is, is that couldn't, that shouldn't change if we've already offered it. And it was, it was come to at some sensible work by the present manager and looking at information he had at hand. I, I think if we've already presented that as something, it's an indication that that, that number either needs to be by consensus agreed to now or not, but it was already offered once. That'd be one. There's also been mention of a moving allowance. It's number seven on your chart, and is that requested in, in his letter or in his?
The specific dollar amount was not? That's what I
Was it just in the letter but not in his revised contract?
It was in his revised, or what?
Okay, it's not, I didn't find it in the contract.
No, it wasn't in the contract.
Only in the letter that was sent. Okay, I agree with that.
You agree with what?
I'm, I'm saying that I think that that needs to be included in any revised employee agreement at, for number two, let's call it.
Okay.
And the other issues that Dan has brought up, we need to walk through those and get an opinion so that whoever's going to create the new number two employee agreement sent to the candidate, that we have consensus on all of it. It'll help you, it'll
Yeah, we want to get it right.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, Ernie?
I think we're getting pretty close. More I hear about is, we're almost going to stay with the same benefits. We're not going to move outside that realm at this point in time.
Little bit, maybe.
Not, not a much to make it.
No.
Not much. But if we're going to move out, we have to make sure we define what we're going to move out in that. Seeing, whether I like it or not, we cannot back off on what we offered him far salary-wise at this point in time. Whether I agree with it or not, we're, we're at that point, at this point in time in that. Far as the benefits overall, I think we need to stay within the, our benefits for the township as they address all the employees in the township. Now, if we want to make a few modifications, fine, but we have to be very careful what those modifications are in that. Far as moving expenses, I go back and ask, here again, I was working on this last night and my son called because he wanted to find out how much snow we had and everything else up there. So I started talking to him on that. And I started mentioning some of these things, and he got a little quiet. He says, what are you people doing up there? He says, I'm hiring engineers to work on multi-million dollar contracts. We don't pay them, all this stuff. This is what we have within the company in that. We don't go out of that, outside of that. And I'll tell you, what he made, a comment he made at the end, he says, are you hiring a dictator because he wants to change everything? And I, I said, can I quote you on that? He said, you can quote me on it. He says, I've got four engineers I'm working with right now trying to hire, and he says, trying to get them aboard, and I got five or six major contracts coming in that I don't have people to cover. And he, he says, to be honest with you, it's over $20 million I'm sitting there, I've got to cover. Trying to get people in there to do it. And he says, we're nowhere near that. I have some people coming in here that we're paying, who are making tremendous amount of dollars, and they come walking in the door and they want this. And I tell them, they're not getting it. We don't pay it that way. So I'm just relaying what he's done currently down in, in Appleton at this point in time. We have to be very careful, as I said before, we have contracts coming up, and as David has mentioned, I've mentioned, they're all going to look at this and they're going to listen very closely at this as to see what's happening here. Because this is what we're going to negotiate for the future in that. I think we need to follow the benefits all the way down the line. Moving expense, we can come up with a figure of 5,000. I have no idea what the cost is going to be or that. And that, that's just an estimate, that. Severance pay, he's got severance pay plus six months plus hospitalization for those six months in that two so. The cost factor's there, big time. You've got just six months for dollar amount. How much that hospitalization's going to cost us in that and whatever else in that. I'd like to go with the three months in that. There again, that can be whatever the board wants to decide at this point in time, but I, I want to stay with the three months in that two so.
I was just going to say, so do you have a consent? I'm trying to see where we're going next. Do you have a comment or a question or?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
You always have comments.
I don't know how we came to the consensus that 108,000 was ever, should have been offered in the first place. The board never considered the amount to be offered. That's why at the last time we talked about it, I was requesting some kind of a copy of that stuff be distributed around so everybody could see what we were doing. And I would see the same thing happening next time is, is we're going to take what we think everybody talked about, and we're going to send them that again, and all of a sudden, because we sent it to them, we're locked into it. Negotiations is just that, negotiations. It's give and take. I'm, number one, I'm not in favor of, of offering him a counter to his counter, but I'm certainly not in favor of, I don't think we're locked into the 108. If I'm in the majority, minority, that's fine, I'll have to live with that, but I don't agree with offering him a counter proposal without this board looking at it and saying, coming up with the majority that, yes, that's what we want to send him. We shouldn't just send him something based on what we're saying in these conversations. We should see a draft of that proposal, and the board should look at it and say, yeah, that's what we're going to do, or we should look at it and change it accordingly. But I don't think we should just send them off something. I think it should be under a motion.
Okay, Dan?
And I don't think we've established a consensus that we want to send them in it.
That's what I'm asking.
With that note, I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we send him a revised proposal of 108,650 for his salary, for 16 days vacation, for 12 days sick leave, no vehicle, and I'll, I guess I'll say four months for the severance pay and $10,000 moving expense.
Again, address your retirement.
I'm sorry?
Again, address our retirement.
Everybody doing retirement.
You say up to 10,000 in moving?
Up to 10,000 in moving. Or I'll just say 10,000, leave it at 10,000. We can, we can, I guess, that does seem a little high. I'll say $8,000 moving expenses. And the retirement system, what we have right now is our current manager.
Does that cover all of our bases?
Probation, four months.
Well, let's, let's look at this part first.
No, severance is four months probation. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's a different issue, though.
Yeah, that
We can get to that. Do we have a second on what's been proposed? Do we have a second on what's been proposed?
Well, be supportive for discussion.
Well, that's up to you.
I did.
Okay, so we have a motion and support.
Yeah.
Comments?
Yeah, Dave's first.
Okay, Dave.
Push the button.
Go ahead.
I'm, I can't support it. I'm not in favor of, I think the contract, we are far enough apart, he's already indicated on two separate occasions that he can't come up here for what we're offering to pay. I can't support sending him a counter proposal.
Okay, Randy?
Well, if you don't send it, you don't know if it'll happen. So I would say, I would support it just to see what comes back anyway.
Doesn't hurt.
Okay, Ernie?
Part of it I can support, I want to make sure on retirement, if it's going to be with the current retirement percentages that we have at this point in time. Moving expenses, whatever, 5,000, I don't know, maybe I'm old fashioned that, but...
It's not cheap.
I know it's not cheap, but they want to come up, they're going to have to pay some of themselves. If you're going over 5,000, we'll split it. If you're going 8,000, we'll pay four and they'll pay four, something like this here and that. Far as severance pay, four months. Are you also going to include hospitalization in that severance pay or not?
It's not in here now, no.
It's not in here now, so we're not even going to, that is not going to be...
I'm not going to address it with my...
Not going to address it then, okay. Far as, far as the dollar wise, I'm like Dave, I'm not happy with that. He's got six years of experience down there and that's it. I don't consider being supervisor, being part of that total experience package in that. So I have a difficult time going with the current figure that's there. So I will not support this either.
Pete?
Well, I called the moving, and company this morning, they said, "They're going to bring Kate the $12,000 to move from east, from downstate up here." It all depends on the list of what's in there, who they have to do with that, all this everything. So that's just a shot in the dark there. I could probably, you know, I could probably get along, you know, to agree with something like this. But again, the car is out, the wages should stay at 108 when it's dated. And the whole conversation we had the last couple, at the meeting, that we're going to send back, send back and be negotiating and he'll come back with an offer and stuff like that. That's all we talked about. And that's how we ended the meeting. So I don't know why you're so surprised that we shouldn't send back something, you know, because that's all what to talk about, negotiations and discussions, so.
I think this is...
Car allowance, you know, I can't, I can't agree with that at all. So moving expenses is shot in the dark, car request is no. Sick days, fine, 16 days on the vacation, fine, and I'll be with that 108,650.
So let me get some clarification here because this is, the motion is for specific things.
Correct.
Are we staying, are we leaving the manager's position in the current classification system?
That was the first part of my motion, is we, I think it's...
Leave it in there.
Everybody's best interest to leave that manager's position in the current classification.
Okay, well, then why would you?
Well, the, the benefits are not tied to that.
They're not tied into that.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. So you're just talking about the wage.
No, everything, wages and benefits. But the wage, what is, what's your question?
Well, you changed the vacation. It's not a big amount of money, but we're either following something or we aren't.
Well, requested was 20 days.
Right.
He's at 12. I split in the middle and gave 16.
Okay, so you're changing it?
I'm changing that, yes. Changing the sick leave days, no, sick leave days are...
So you left those the same?
Same.
Okay.
Moving expenses and then the severance is four months.
Severance is three.
So there's a few changes in there, but I, I just want to let him know that this is our best and final. You know, we're not, we're not going to go playing back and forth. If he doesn't want this, he doesn't want it, period.
And we'll move on.
And we'll move on, we'll, we'll then go out for, we'll post it, so.
We'll go hire an agency to do it for us.
You know, we don't have time to be going back and forth and back and forth. I think this is a fair, fair offer. And if he doesn't want it, he doesn't want it.
Okay. All right, so the motion is 108,650, 16 days vacation, 12 sick days, whatever health and dental and vision package that we currently have, no car allowance, stay with the current retirement program the way it is. And you're saying up to 8,000?
I'd said 8,000. We'll just put it at 8,000.
For moving expense, and that's it, okay. And then four months of severance?
Correct.
With, with current severance, no health insurance.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead, John.
I, I think it would be good to stop for a moment and ask manager Gerard, who probably will craft this, if he has any further questions, so that he can proceed.
Well, I've never been involved in any of it up to this point, so, in fact, I'm just now, trustee Larue, if you take a look at the letter that came, I've seen of it. I did not craft the original offer that went to the manager. The board, however, did approve that at your last actual meeting. The very last action you took was to authorize the supervisor to offer the current contract with a salary of 108,650. So it's kind of interesting to hear the conversation today. That's why it went out. Roger was directed to draft the contract and it went out. So I guess if, if the board now wants me to put together the offer, I'll do that. But that's up to you.
Are we proposing our first before?
Well, Randy, tell, I, I think you explained this before, but tell them where you came with, it's 108,650, but the other offer was 106 and 19, $20,019. Where you came with that number. I mean, some, I think some people don't understand where that number came from.
Well, it came right out of your compensation system. That is the, that is the grade 10 salary for someone that exceeds step seven of the plan. Step seven is eight years. That's where that figure came from. It came right out of the plan. The plan, the 2019 salary range for grade 10 to 78, wrong number, 78,000 to 106,000 dollars over that span. That's where that figured.
So I missed?
And then now it's 108,650 because that entire structure increased by two and a half percent as of January 1st.
So I missed, so I'm explaining it, it wasn't a nebulous number you came from.
No, and the rationale, as the, as I recall, from, you know, certainly it would be on, I think that was on YouTube, the discussion at the placement at the top of the grade was based upon the six years here as superintendent plus four and a half years at Grand Blaine Township, gain 10 and a half years, beyond step seven of the plan.
The contract that Roger looked at, that's, I don't have these dated, that's what is in here, 108,650, and it's in red. And then you guys got it.
Well, it's a moot point. It's been offered and that's, I think that's what we should stick with. Well, that's why that's in the motion.
I didn't make it up because I didn't know what the number was.
Well, and again, the system is, it's not a nebulous number, it comes from the system. And before we had the system, which I was here for, it was total chaos. People had put their own numbers in there and we were constantly changing them and negotiating them. And the systems worked for the last 12, 13 years. And it's, it's defendable and, I mean, we haven't had a problem with it. The board might not like it, but unfortunately it is what it is and it's what we have, so.
Well, I don't think that's the argument though, Randy. I think what they're questioning is the fact that he got the offer at the high end of the pay scale.
Correct, but...
Because like Randy said, six and four. That's why I, throughout the six year, if you want to not consider the supervisor's time here, if nothing else, I guess you could give it to him for the fact that he knows the community and all the people he'll be working with and the staff. You could give him the benefit of the doubt for that. 6,000, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a moot point, but I, I think you could make the argument that, you know, he's been here in this area, it could be, or he's been in, in the township realm of things for at least 10 years. And he does understand what's going on and, and it's not like you're training someone all over again to do this, I mean, which can be costly if they don't know what they're...
It's huge, I mean, it's a huge...
It can be very costly if they don't know what they're doing. So, but I mean, that's where the number came from, just so the residents don't think we're just placing them there because he's, he does have the experience and an ad win on us depending on qualifications. So it wasn't that, it's where it is, you know?
He has more qualifications than we requested.
Correct.
Have a roll call over that, please.
I don't see any light, so...
It's all discussion.
Anything else, anybody? We're all clear on what the motion is, Ernie?
I'd like to see this before it's sent.
That's what dates are.
Yeah, I mean, it, someone's got to craft it first and then it can be sent out to the board and, but remember, when it gets sent out to the board, no bantering back and forth because that's a violation of the Open Meeting Act. Roger's looking down there. So Lynn will just send you the contract and...
Roger can...
Or Roger can too.
Yeah, he's the one that, so I didn't have, I had the original, he got it from Randy and...
I guess it'd be easier if Roger just sent it out and then, I guess if you had any questions, you could go to him. Because unfortunately, we can't have...
He's got his eyebrows up ready.
Well, we can't, we can't have discussion outside of this forum, so I mean, if you have questions with the attorney, I mean, that's different, but...
Do you have a problem with doing that?
No, Randy put it together, the manager put it together last time, and I made a couple of minor revisions to it that I thought should be in there, one of which I will address in a second here. And you have a meeting tomorrow night, so I can potentially prepare to bring it with me.
I'm definitely...
Right.
Okay.
But one of the other questions is, you had a probation period of one year.
Yes, I cut you off on that, thank you.
And technically, you have an at-will employee. So that was one of the things that I put in, is if you're going to have a probation period, what does that mean? If you're an at-will employee, that gives you the right to be, or gives you, the board the right to terminate the employee for any reason at any time. So I inserted the portion about you don't get any severance pay during the probation period if you're terminated during that period. That was my judgment call and is fair game for discussion with the board, but it will need to be clarified as far as whether you want that in there or you don't want that in there. At wills, as you want.
Well, my opinion is you're an at-will employee, can be fired at any time for no cause. So that's probationary enough, really.
Now, the problem I have is when you're, when you, if you're released for no cause, then you get the severance package. So he could technically be here a week, be let go for no cause and get the severance package.
Which is four months now.
Yeah, but that's, I would say that's our fault for doing that. We'd have to answer the residents, why did we fire him and they're going to pay him for four months if we just hired him? That would be kind of stupid.
Well, who knows what the next board's going to do? And that's where this discussion kept coming up.
Well, yes.
Whether or not he had a hostile board.
Well, and another thing is if I was in that position, I would want something if I get fired for no reason. You can't just hire someone and say, yeah, well, in November, the board changes and we got a hostile board, which no one can tell, and they don't like the manager and they fire him and he gets nothing. I mean, that's what could happen and unfortunately, I don't think that would be fair to anyone. If I was in that position, I know it wouldn't be fair.
Can't take him for a paid ride until you get out, eh?
We've had previous board members that have not liked our current manager and I think some of them would have liked to have seen him removed and that never happened. So I think this is really a moot point that he's going to be here for a week and somebody's not going to like him and terminate him? Really?
Yeah, it'd be our fault if that happened.
Yeah.
But it might not be us.
No, I mean, but...
It could be in six months.
But that was the comment, he was here for a week and we got rid of him, he gets a severance, so that would be our fault if that happened. But no, you're right, if the new board decides to terminate the manager in November, then that's up to them. That's their, that's baby and there's nothing that we can do other than...
And they're going to pay it.
And they're going to pay it out and they're going to have to justify to the residents why they're paying it out, I mean.
Okay, go ahead, Randy.
Just to clarify where that provision of my contract came from, and trustee Iverson basically broached the subject already, there was a fairly contentious period on the township board when the board itself was at war with each other. And there was, I think it was two, two particular board members that did not like facts being presented.
That was 10 years ago.
They, they did not like facts being presented, preferred to make up stuff that I would challenge. And there was a move to potentially remove him because that was an obstacle to their plan. And when the contract came up for renewal, I wanted some protection and that's where that provision came from.
You deserve some protection because the whole, the whole thing that was going on was totally BS.
But it shouldn't be about the person.
It's not the position.
But it was, and I'm just saying that it was.
That's what he wrote in, I get that.
Yeah, that was, that was, when my contract came up for renewal, I said, you know, if I'm going to continue in this position, I want some protection. And that's where that provision came from, it's just never been taken out. But I have always been an at-will employee, that the board could at any point in time suggest that I should not be the manager and I would, in fact, I told the board that several times, if you don't want me, just give me an indication that I'll resign. You know, you don't have to go through the, the effort of firing me publicly, that kind of thing and any repercussions that came from that. So that's just a relationship that I have with you as my employer. So I don't know that you even need a probationary period, I mean, it's obviously an at-will employee. I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's one of the things the board said, was probation anyway, so that's why it was in there. I was just rereading the, the paragraph he's got about all of this and I think he's still in the superintendent mind frame. And I think that's going to be his intent when he gets here, he's going to stay in that mind frame, it's going to be hard to get him out and put him in the manager. But he's saying the limited protection of severance pay is unheard of, removing, I'm sorry, removing the limited protection of severance pay is unheard of in my profession. He can't agree to not having it in there. So in the first place, he's not a superintendent here and I think that's going to be a bit of a conflict that he's going to feel he still is and he's entitled to all of this stuff because this is what he has now. We have to make sure that he understands.
He's going to have to accept it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're, we're going to send him, I guess, our best offer back and that's it.
That's it, that's final.
And if he says no, I guess then we move forward.
Okay.
I mean, really.
So probation of one year is out, correct?
Is at-will, we don't need a...
Okay, I just want to make sure where we are.
So is that okay with the second of the motion, no probation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and we're still going to keep the four-year, or four-month severance even after that discussion with no health insurance?
Correct.
Am I right?
That was never in there, so it wasn't...
It was in his request.
Oh.
His request, it was his request.
Yeah, and it included that.
I will reread the motion before we vote on it anyway, so.
Please.
Okay. Should we reroute, read it? Now we're, we're all on the same level?
Is, I just want to make sure discussion's over.
That's what I mean.
Okay, so the motion by trustee Iverson was to proceed with the offer of 108,650 as salary and that's in our current classification system. 16 days of vacation, no change in sick days. Medical, dental and vision as is right now. No car allowance. The retirement is the same as the current manager now. Not, no change in that. Up to an $8,000 moving expense.
Oh, I did, an $8,000.
Okay, $8,000 moving expense. Four months of severance with no health insurance and no probationary period included.
Correct.
So that's what I got as a motion. And that was seconded by trustee Marks.
So John, let me make one more observation. You said that you had 10 points on here when you looked through it, I had done eight. I just wondered if we missed something.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
I'll call a question.
Okay.
Okay, there's requested roll call, so trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
No.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
Clerk Retires, yes, and Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
That motion carries five to two. So I guess someone will send to the board, and that's with the provision that the amended changed offer comes back to the board before it is sent to the candidate.
Yep.
So we're clear on that. Because, yeah, so it's pretty cut and, do you have that, Roger? Is it pretty cut and dried?
I have all of those details and I will confer with the manager to figure out the logistics, but we will attempt to have that for the board meeting for tomorrow evening.
And a point of clarification too, best and final. I, I want him to know that we're not going to be going back and forth. This is it.
Final offer.
Take it or leave it.
Final offer?
Yes.
Okay, because we need to move on if this is.
Yeah, we have things to do.
Okay.
Make them more fully adjourned.
Well, we got, we still got part of the.
We have no publics, so there's no comment. Any board member comment?
I had a couple of comments, I don't know if you want to get into it. I went and looked at their budget overall and that. If you want, I can go through real quick what they have down there. Just on their planned budget, their real property tax, they're pulling in $5,440,000. Personal property, $317,000. State constitutional is $3,180,000. And they got that other revenue sharing that we don't get of $129,000. There's only 120 units in the state that get that. We don't get it because there aren't enough people.
So they can afford a higher salary? We can't, we can't.
I know. The police department itself is $7 million and their revenue is $15 million. So you start seeing the differential real quick in that.
Okay, any other board member comment?
I would like to just say that I think that's a very fair offer.
I agree.
Glad to hear you say that, man. Review the motions?
The motion was to approve the agenda as presented, that was approved. The motion to extend the best and final offer to the candidate as outlined in the previous discussion was approved five to two and that's it.
Okay. One more motion?
I moved to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Let's see what time it is.
Five.
5:56. Put that on the record. Put it 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 on the record.